To the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
Of the flag, the United States.
Of America.
America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call for the roll, Councilmember Connie. Councilmember Connie.
Present.
Rodriguez.
Present.
Strong. Councilmember Strong. Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
Yes.
I heard Madge doing the pledge, so I know she's there.
She's there.
No, I just now got here.
Thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't there in time for the pledge.
Oh, it sounded like you.
All right, so all councilmembers are present, it sounds like it. So now, a pre-pact notice due to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 25-20, which has spent certain requirements of the Brown Act and the order of the health officer, the county medicino to shelter in place to minimize the spread of COVID-19. The city council members will be participating in a teleconference and a meeting of May 13, 2020. And again, a reminder to everybody to mute your lines and to your ready to speak. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna go to item two, public communication. Welcome participation. What?
Mayor Gonzalez, we need to add the off agenda item.
Oh, okay, I thought we were... What? Do we need to amend the... We need to amend the agenda?
Correct.
All right. All right, so what do we have? The off agenda item or a vote? Is it the vote on supporting that initiative by the league?
Yes.
Okay, and that would become item nine? Will that be 9C?
That will be item 8C.
8C, okay.
Yes.
All right. We have a request to add an off agenda item. I believe you all should have got a copy of that. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Move, this is Larry.
Right, do I have a second?
I'll second it, that's Madge.
All right, any further discussion? All right, call for the bed, Kathy.
Councilmember Connie.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Mayor Gonzalez.
I haven't been talking yet.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, I'm gonna go for public communication. Councilmembers' participation in this meeting is limited to three minutes per person for that everyone that's here can access and avoid to address the specific terms. More than important, this is an assertion given by the group. This is limited under the definition of the cops, which are not allowed to speak in that public environment. Can't commit more one people get to this. However, now, at this part, I'm gonna ask if there's any requests from the public that has the right to speak.
Yes, Mark West, your first.
Okay. We recognize Mark West, go ahead.
All right. I'm gonna be tough to be three minutes, you know me, Jerry. But first one is, thank you Kathy for working with Matty to get the pool set up for how we're gonna do that. We'll follow all the guidelines and make sure everything goes well. But the pool is fully operational and ready to go. I would like the council to know that we're doing our graduation. We're using pickup trucks and using the track to announce to students. We're gonna come in on the north entry, have the student in the back and the family in the truck. No family out in the grounds or anything. We're gonna YouTube stream it and Facebook stream it. Mike Kovik, the principal, will be in the center and he'll be able to do stuff. We're gonna record kids' speeches. Our goal is to do our graduation ceremony with a kid in the back of a pickup truck they decorate up and park around the ring of the track and put in a nice graduation that will be pretty unique. What I would like the city to help me with and acknowledge is that when we leave, we'd like to come back down that north road of the track. We would like to take a trip through town that would take us through town, past Fectal, past Flosser, past Brookside, and then disperse when we get to commercial where there's a four-way stop. And I would call it more of a processional instead of a parade. We're not asking to block off streets and all that, but we would like some help from the officers to allow the processional to make its round. And so I'd like to get the council's opinion on that.
Mark, I'll start out, this is Jerry. You should at least be at our manager. So that it be done legally so that you guys in the city are covered.
Jerry?
I've never liked...
Jerry?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you, Jerry, are breaking up a lot and I can't understand what's happening. So I'll go back and mute myself. But for some reason, I could hear Mark Westover fine, but I couldn't make out what you were saying.
Like a bad Burger King drive-through.
Okay, I haven't moved or anything, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, you're fine right now.
Okay. Again, what I said is that I would just ask that Mark work with the police chief and the city manager to make sure that whatever the district does, that it's done legally and in a safe manner.
And this is Stephanie, city manager, and we can figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah. Procession is much different than a parade and it shouldn't be a problem as long as people keep moving.
Right. Yeah, our biggest issue is making sure that our kids stay in the vehicle and the graduation part will be our gig. But going through town, I would imagine you'll have people who stop their vehicle or get set up around the... We're gonna publicize what the route is. And we just need to make sure that they follow the rules.
And what I would suggest, Mark, is that you give me a call tomorrow and we can get with the police chief and figure out the best way to do that and what kind of rules we need. Then we'll go from there. We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I think it'll be fairly simple to figure out. I know that we've talked to the fire department and we're gonna talk with the M.P. I think it would be kinda cool to have our first responders be part of it. And so, you know, we just wanna take a stroll through town with a group of kids and get some hornbeating and some waving from the houses and do a tour past the school.
Thank you, Mark. This is great for community spirit. I know that people are excited about this.
Yeah, I think it'll be pretty fun. I know that you guys are working out stuff with banners that a group purchased and all that, and I really appreciate that.
Okay. Anybody else from the public like to speak? I do know that our sheriff is in the audience out there. But anybody else?
I'm on, I was having a little trouble with the mute on my phone. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, I can.
Good, Sheriff Matt Kendall. I wanted to address the city council this evening for just a couple of minutes because I've been receiving a lot of different phone calls about the zero bail schedule that was enacted by the judiciary in the state of California regarding the COVID-19. Currently, the sheriff's office is still concerned, deeply concerned about public safety and we're continuing to refund the COVID-19 dealing with the zero bail schedule. Every day, I'm receiving a daily list of all persons who are released from the county jail, including standard releases as well as the zero bail schedule. I'm emailing that list also to the Willis Police Chief, Chief Allen. And so far, this has worked out really well. I just kinda wanted to put some people's minds to these because we still have the ability, when we have a person that we believe to be a public safety risk, to contact our judiciary here in Mendocino County. They have worked with us and we completed 1269C in basically explaining our concerns about releasing someone who's a public safety risk and the judges have adjusted bail accordingly. And that's just basically what I wanted to get out there. We're still working on all of these things and working with Chief Allen. He's been really good to work with, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do I have anybody else that would like to speak?
Yeah, guys, this is Marcy from Willis Frontier Days.
Okay, go ahead, Marcy.
We just had our meeting and we'd like you guys all to know that we have chose to postpone all of the Forces July event for 2020. So I know they were gonna talk about the parade tonight, so if you guys could just take that off the agenda, that would be great.
Thank you, Marcy. And again, not unexpected, but I am sorry that this whole came about. Thank you for coming here tonight. Caffeony. All right, does anybody else like to speak?
Can I say something? Jerry, this is Greta, can I say something?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, Marcy, can you please extend my personal thanks to everybody on the Willis Frontier Days board and your group of volunteers? You all worked so hard to put on such an amazing event and we're all so just bummed that this isn't happening this year. We appreciate you doing everything you've had, you've done to just keep it going with the hope that we could have it. And we look forward to other events later in the year. So thank you so much, please pass on my thoughts.
Well, dude, thank you, guys, for supporting us and we'll still be down here keeping the grounds looking good.
Thank you, Marcy, and thank you, Greta, for that. Anybody else from the public who'd like to speak on something that's not on the agenda?
This is Kathy McKeon, I'm with Caltrans. I'm the project manager for the downtown rehabilitation project and I just wanted to send my thanks to all of the staff that have worked so great with Caltrans and coming to this effort. It's been a long time coming, but they really stepped up to the plate. Everybody pitched in and we were able to have a successful project. So I just wanna extend my thanks to everyone in the city.
Thank you very much.
And this is Kathy, this is Stephanie Gerbantz here. Your item is gonna be later in the agenda and we'll be talking about all that later. So that's great, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, any public communication that's going on?
The Willis Chamber of Commerce.
Go ahead, Ron.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things to talk about. I just got out of the Frontier Days meeting with Marcy and I'm gonna tell you that it was with great angst that the group decided to cancel and postpone the events. We know how important it is to the whole community and it was a very difficult decision to make, but we know that it was the correct one to make and we'll carry on. We will continue to do our rodeo later on this year, so we will keep our continuous rodeo history together. The other thing that I wanted to say is through a collaboration with the Willis Chamber of Commerce, the Mendocino Coast Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Yucaya Business and Tourism Alliance, we have started a program called Love Local Mendo, which is a website and a program that allows businesses to list their business on that site with any kinds of specials or gift certificates available or special products, all their information so that shoppers and customers can go to that site and be able to... It'll be a great place for businesses as well as shoppers. So go to www.lovelocalmendo.com. Shoppers and businesses can list their concerns, or not concerns, but their businesses, and then shoppers can look at that. It's also important to realize that we have opened this up to all businesses in Mendocino County, not just chamber members. Although it does tie in with the Chamber of Commerce, Willis Community Hot Deals on our website, which members of the chamber can go ahead and list on that the same way. Shoppers can go to willis.org and look up Willis Community Hot Deals for that. The other one that I wanna talk to, and can everybody hear me? Is it getting through? I'm getting a lot of static.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. It's the Community Resilience and Preparedness Fund, which the West Business Development Center and the Community Foundation in collaboration with the three chambers that I just mentioned. This is just in the planning and promoting stage right now. There will be a fund that will award grants to support an economic development strategy that will empower microbusinesses in our local business landscape. These grants will provide support to businesses willing to participate in a rounded approach to transition their businesses to fit the new reality. And certainly, there is such a thing as we see ahead of us. Participation will include working in groups and one-on-one with advisors from the groups mentioned. Funds can be used for tools for any potential substantial long-term growth and to utilize effectively sustain and evolve our businesses and keep our community strong and hopefully, all our businesses viable. Any questions can be directed to the local chambers or West Business Development Center or the Community Foundation, preferably to the chambers at this time. So that's all.
Thank you, Ron. All right, at this point, one last call for public comment. Okay. Yes. Is there a chance for me to make a little statement? This is John Sherman. Oh, John, okay, go ahead. Public comment, something not on the agenda, go ahead.
I'm sitting here and I'm really encouraged to hear the council, staff, West, Chamber of Commerce, Frontier Days, people all working together. And that's really encouraging to the community that kinda wonders what's going on out there. With that in mind, I'd like to ask a question. Is the city health officer working with the county health officer and the Fort Grand Health Officer in the state-sponsored COVID-19 testing program?
I can actually respond to that. So the cities do not have... The city does not have a public health officer. We defer to the county public health officer who basically gives us the orders of the county health official. And it is incumbent upon cities within the county to enforce the orders of the county health official. We work very closely with that official and we are meeting with her once or twice a week along with the other city managers and with the county administrator. And that is how that's working. And when we do get updates, we post those immediately to our website and to our Facebook page.
Is the city cooperating with the state-sponsored COVID testing program?
I actually have an item on the agenda where I'm gonna sort of talk about that a little bit. So I'm not sure if I should talk in...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay, we have an item and we have some exciting news.
Okay, we're waiting for that.
Okay, so we can wait for that so I can sort of talk, I'd like to talk to you about that.
Thank you.
All right, one last call again for public comment before I close it. Okay, at this point, I will close public comment and we will move into item three, public matters discussion. Impossible action accepting relinquishment of the state right-of-way from State Route 101, PM 4.636 to PN 47.53 to the city of Willis. Stephanie will be handling this?
I just believe that we've got Jeremy Runka on the line that will be handling that.
Jeremy? I didn't know I was handling it, but sure.
If you prefer that I do, that's fine too.
I mean, yeah, I didn't... I don't really know what to say other than just... It's the official acceptance of the relinquishment. We've really accepted the condition and everything already, so this is just authorizing Caltrans to go ahead with their finalization of it.
And I'll just add to that, this has been a very long process and I know that, Jeremy, you have been in on this process from the very beginning. I only stepped in in sort of midstream as the work was being done by Caltrans. The actual agreement for this work to take place, and as you said, Jeremy, the agreement to relinquish the street had already been made before I came on board with a previous council. Our job was to simply work with Caltrans and to make sure that the required work was done, that it was all done to our satisfaction and that it was all in good condition. And I think that after a long process and many, many meetings and so many people contributing to this, not only staff but also council members, there's a council ad hoc committee working very closely with this and we have members of the public commenting. We had just a great number of participation. And I know that Kathy McKeon is on the line. She's been the project manager and she's very proud of the fact that we've won some awards because of this project. So this is sort of the city's final step in passing a resolution that officially grants the blessing and basically passes the relinquishment process onto the state of California for their action. And I'm going to sort of give it over to Kathy McKeon at this time.
Thanks, Stephanie. I do, you know, I just wanna reiterate, it's been great towards this staff. I think they've really worked well and been conjunctive with us. It's been a cooperative effort. And the businesses as well, you know, you guys were very supportive while we were going through this process, which I know can be very trying. But I think the way that we had managed the project, it made it maybe a little bit easier and I'm hoping everybody felt that way. What I did wanna note is that this is one step of a few that have to take for the city actually take control of the right-of-way. We take your resolution, hopefully that is approved tonight, and we take that and submit that to the CTC, the California Transit Basic Commission. They, at that point, in June, will make an action saying that they approve that action to relinquish it to the city. And we would record that resolution from the CTC and effectively, it would take place as of July 1st of 2020. And at that point, you know, we were hoping to give it over to the ex so you could do your own parade. I'm really sad to hear that you guys had to give it up. I understand the conditions that you had too. But at this point, no more encroachment permits. You know, as of July 1st, there would be no more encroachment permits. It would be under the control of the city. We do have a maintenance agreement that we're working with the city staff on finalizing and that would just speak to the cooperative portions of the right-of-way, like the signal to South End where Highway 20 is. There is some cooperative work that needs to be done. We're asking the city and paying them to do some sweeping south of that. But generally, the city will take over the maintenance and ownership of the right-of-way at that point and have full control. So I did wanna thank everybody. Thank the staff as well as the people within the city for all their cooperation. I think it was one of the most successful transitions and downtown improvements that I have ever seen. So I am gonna open it if that's any questions. If anybody has any questions of me, if that's okay, Stephanie?
Absolutely, and just quickly, I also wanted to... One person who I wish could be here is Bill Wilson. I know he was sort of a point person on this entire process and I'm just sorry he couldn't be here for this day. And I know he worked really, really hard to make sure this went right and curious to Bill.
Agreed.
All right, here, I have a question, if it's okay. Okay, first of all, who is speaking right now?
John Sherman.
All right, and just for future, for anybody, I'm gonna... After John, I'm gonna call each individual council member and then open it up to the public. But go ahead, John.
Okay, I'd be happy to wait if that's what you'd like to do.
Go ahead. I'm just trying to, so that we don't all jump on board. Go ahead.
Okay, my question should be short and very specific. How reliable is the July 1st date? And the reason I ask is because I have a project on Main Street and right now, Eric DeLalo tells me that if I apply for my encroachment permits and everything else to make my utility connections in Main Street, that they won't be able to process the encroachment permits in time for the July 1st. And I'm wondering, if that July 1st date is totally reliable, then it's probably better if I just wait and do the encroachment permits with the city. That being said, there's also a $4,000 to $5,000 difference in achieving the same goal under the city's control or authority versus Caltrans authority.
All right, I'm assuming that that question is directed to me?
Yes, Kathy, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just wanted to not butt in on Stephanie. I think it's very reliable. The Caltrans is very vested in, you know, we already have it on the CTC agenda. I don't, with this resolution, I don't see any hiccup. We have everything into them as far as the package. So I think you're very well, you know, it would serve... I'm assuming that that $4,000 means you would have a savings if you went to the place of the city as opposed to coming to Caltrans. And I think that's a pretty good bet. I would say if I were a voting person, it would be a 95 to 5%, you know, bet.
Great, thank you, Kathy.
You can never guarantee there's 100% guarantee. I can't imagine what would happen after this point, but...
Well, yeah, but all things in the world are within our imagination.
Yeah, as we found out, out of mid-March.
All right, thank you, Kathy. All right, at this point, I'll start off with Greta. Do you have any questions of Kathy or Stephanie or anybody?
No.
Okay, Sabrina, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have two. Just thinking back in the last year about questions that we had prior to this moment and wondering, did we get answers in regards to the wear and tear on the road? Is the city finding that the thickness of the replacement of the road and all that has turned out to be sufficient? And then there was also some conversation previously about the traffic signals, the software, the parts, that sort of thing. Has that all been resolved? Because I haven't received any update.
This is Jeremy. Again, the asphalt thickness, I mean, the asphalt, it's pretty early, but it looks fine. It should look fine at this point, but we don't really have any concerns, especially with the final thickness that was put down. I think we got a lot of asphalt on that road and it should hold up, you know, as well as we can hope. Um, uh, I think the signal at Commercial Street, if that's what you're talking about, um, I think that timing was adjusted too. And, uh, it, you know, seems to be functioning how we hoped it would.
All right, Suprina, do you have any other questions?
No.
All right, Madge, do you have any questions? Madge, do you have any questions?
Can you hear me now? Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I can't tell whether my mute is on or off, and it was... Oh, well, anyway, um, the one thing I'm wondering is on the, uh, Shurewood Road intersection, um, improvements that were made, uh, what kind of liability or responsibility if that doesn't hold up? Like, if there's an earthquake and, uh, that retaining wall starts to fail or any of that? Uh, because that was a concern I had way back before they, uh, even started that project. And, uh, in my mind, Caltrans is, and the contractor are responsible, not the city. So I want to know about what would happen if there was a problem there. Are there any other questions?
Kathy, do you want to weigh in? Jeremy?
Sure, I, I can weigh in. Um, so, so everything that was constructed out there is constructed to Caltrans standards. And as you know, we don't like to take on a whole lot of liabilities. So, um, it's as, it's as well constructed as any other facility along the state highway. Um, we don't typically have wall fail wells. We're pretty conservative in our design. So it is, we are handing it, this is the city, but we do not anticipate, you know, any failures. I think in, uh, that is a pretty rocky slope, Madge. So I would say that you have a pretty, um, a, a pretty conservative design. Beyond that, uh, you know, all I can say is that we have constructed those and designed those to Caltrans standards. And the city was accepting of those standards when we started the project, so... Um, we're moving forward based on the fact that everybody was comfortable with those standards. From a liability perspective. If there's anything more specific than that, then I, I don't know that I can give you anything.
I'll, I'll chime in, uh, I know that, uh, this was certainly a question that I asked as well. And our city attorney and Jeremy and our engineering department all chimed in on this. Our city engineer was pleased with the design, he did review it. Um, it is widely accepted that Caltrans is sort of, they know how to do these kinds of projects, and if anyone's gonna design it, you know, that's, they're pretty much the people who do that. Um, that said, in terms of straight liability, obviously if there's a construction defect, um, I can let Jim speak to that, but we certainly, the city would have a cause of action if there was a defect for, um, a certain number of time after the, the notice of completion of construction. Um, after that, I think that we accept it. So I don't know if Jim wants to, to speak to, to that, and, and what other things we have.
This is Jim Latch, the city attorney. I, I agree with what Stephanie just said. If, uh, under, uh, the hypothetical that was presented, there was a, a wall failure, and if it was determined that the wall failed because of, of, uh, proconstruction or non-compliance with standards or, uh, uh, a design defect, uh, the city had, the city was not the designer, the city was not the contractor. And so I think in that, in that hypothetical, the city would look to, uh, Caltrans for, uh, for, uh, having liability over it. Um, so, I, I'm comfortable with the statements that we've heard that the built, that the wall was built satisfactorily, but in answer to the hypothetical, uh, yes, I don't think that the city's accepting, uh, the relinquishment and ownership of these facilities means that the city has, uh, designed liability.
Okay. Um, Madge, did you have anything else?
Um, am I audible? Yeah, can you hear me?
Go ahead. Is that a no? Okay, then I will move to Larry. Larry, do you have anything?
Yes, uh, I think the stoplight that, uh, they talked about, uh, Greta and I were on the Caltrans committee, and the thing that we asked for right at the end and was taken was the delay when you press, when you press the button at the intersection, it gives you a delay to start out before the light actually changes. And that was the last thing that we did. And it was the thing that we were concerned with. Thank you very much.
Larry, did you have any other questions regarding this? Then I'm gonna open, uh...
Can, can you hear me now? This is Madge.
Yes, Madge.
Okay, sorry, I, I'm gonna not mute, because I cannot tell when I'm muted and when I am... Uh, thank you for the comments that were, uh, directed to my question. And I just want to, um, reiterate that I am not as, um, fangirling that all Caltrans standards assure longevity. And, and that there, the fact that if there is any, uh, flaw in the construction or the design, uh, that it is not the city's responsibility and that we would have recourse to pursue that. Because, uh, you know, the, the south, uh, arm ramp, uh, onto the southbound, um, bypass was also designed by, by, uh, by, by Caltrans, and it failed a couple times. So, um, I just think it's very important that we know that.
Okay, so at this point, uh, I'd like to see if anybody from the public that hasn't spoken would like to comment on this. Anybody from the public, last call. Okay, I'm gonna bring it back up. Uh, the only question I have, um, this is, uh, to Stephanie or Kathy, um, if, uh, obviously I, I read this, if we don't pass it, if we do pass it, et cetera, it's gonna get voted on by the CTC. My question is, is July 1st kind of the hard date for when we, assuming the CTC passes this, that, uh, that we'll be responsible for maintenance and liability, et cetera? Is that correct? Yes, over to you.
And in terms of maintenance, I also have, um, our Public Works Superintendent on the line to remind folks that, uh, with the new responsibilities of, uh, new Main Street, um, are gonna come new costs. And, um, I don't know if Kenan is there, if he wanted to say a word or two about that, but I think it's wise to remind folks that, um, this is a big responsibility we're taking on. Kenan, would you like to say a word or two?
I'm here, I'm here. Good evening, everyone. Honorable mayor and council members. Um, yeah, we've, uh, our department's looking forward to it, because it's kind of been in a state of, it's not, almost not theirs, and it's almost ours. So we'd like to get working on it and getting, looking, looking presentable and assume responsibility for it, so we're ready for that phase. Um, we have begun to brace ourselves for that reality, because that's gonna increase our, our workload quite a bit. It's gonna be a pretty heavy impact. And, uh, we would like to hope that the council would be open to maybe the idea of backfilling some vacancies, so that we can give it the, the attention that it's gonna require. But we can handle it, um, and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you, Kenan.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, it looks like we need a motion for the resolution. I'm gonna call to see if anybody would like to make an action.
I would like to make the recommended action. This is Larry.
Sure, I have a motion by Larry, do I have a second?
Mr. Suprina, I second the motion.
Okay, so a motion by Larry, a second by Suprina. Do I have any further discussion? If not, I will call for, we'll call them.
Councilmember Connie? I'm sorry. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Both in practice, so we'll move on now to item four, inactive ordinances, we have none, and so item five, consent agenda, and in light of the, uh, the earlier from Willis Frontier Days, um, I know they're pulling the parade, are we pulling decorations from polls too? Do, we know if that's gonna be the case?
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step in here, this is Stephanie. I, we have the banners for the, there's actually maybe a slight change. Um, we don't need a council resolution to put things on our polls. Um, if Frontier Days wishes after the, um, the high school banners, uh, they are planning to have their high school banners up until, I believe, July 1st. Um, if Frontier Days would like to, uh, go ahead and put, uh, the regular Frontier Days decorations on for the 4th of July, even though we can't have a parade, that is certainly something we could do. Um, but right now those, uh, the light poles are gonna be occupied by, uh, high school seniors, so... I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that. I don't need a, I don't need a resolution, but I would love to hear council's thoughts on that.
Okay. So just to get this clear, we would, uh, be pulling item E, and, uh, we would have items A, B, C, and D to vote on, is that correct?
Correct.
So, do I have a motion on the consent agenda? This is Larry.
This is Suprina. I'll second Larry's motion.
Okay, so a motion by Larry, second by Suprina. Any further discussion?
Yes, uh, in response to Stephanie's question, I think that that sounds fine. Uh, the high school, uh, has the polls until July 1st or 10th 30th, and then, uh, if Frontier Day has some stuff they want to put up, great.
I, I would agree with you, Madge, uh, in that respect, so... Um, unless anybody would like to add anything else?
It's just that Suprina, I support using the polls for the, uh, high school seniors for the month of June, and I would like to see the Frontier banners go up, uh, during the month of July, even if there is no parade. I think now more than ever, we need, uh, community spirit, so... I support that.
All right. Uh, Greta or Madge, do you want to weigh in on this at all? Otherwise I'll call for the block. Okay, I guess at this point, uh, Kathy, uh, will call on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Mary Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So now, uh, item six, informational reports, um, do you have any?
None this evening.
All right. All right, item seven, commission's agency authorities. As the planning commission and successor agency, and I see none there. So now we are to item eight, city manager reports and recommendations.
Um, yes, and there are three items, and, um, I, I'm probably gonna just blend them all, um, just to give you a general update of, of what's going on. First of all, I'd like to, um, thank everybody for my well wishes. I was, um, off work for a week and a half for medical issues, and, um, thank you for your good thoughts. And now I'm back and getting stronger, and I just appreciate, um, the well wishes. Um, as for our COVID updates, um, now state-sponsored testing, that, that is actually an interesting topic. Um, I'm not sure if everybody knows this, but the state-sponsored testing, or the state has, um, given the county, um, the wherewithal to do testing. However, we had a huge problem because we did, we do not have a testing lab in Mendocino County, and we had no way to process the tests that we were given. This caused a great consternation, because we could not ma, uh, keep up with the metrics required, um, by the governor of the state of California, and so it became very difficult for us. Uh, we have since lobbied the state very hard, and we are getting a testing and lab, uh, facility, and that is gonna be coming very soon. We're very excited about that. We thank our county administrator and various people that have reached out to the county to do that. Uh, we will be able to process, I believe, a hundred and thirty-four tests a day with that, which will increase our testing capability, and, um, with the more tests and the, and the more clearance that we get, it makes it easier for us to, um, know where we are and what we need to do to beat this, uh, this COVID crisis that we are experiencing at this time. I do want to say that we have one, we just learned of one new positive case in the Ukiah Valley area. It is related to a previous case, and, um, that person is in isolation. In California and the state generally, uh, we are still experiencing, experiencing increases and, uh, in, in cases, but, um, we have not, uh, had, uh, a flood of our medical facilities here in Mendocino County, thank goodness. Um, we have, uh, started to step up something called surveillance testing. Surveillance testing first happened in Guadalajara. Uh, then it, uh, last week, we, it was in, in Fort Braggan. What that is, is testing non-symptomatic people to get a handle on what's going on, um, as a, as a test cases for people who are, um, possibly vulnerable to, to the coronavirus. This includes the homeless and first responders, and, um, various people who volunteer to take the test. Um, Richard Baker from the senior center and myself, we, we have been talking to the county to set that up in Willis as well. We're trying to get a date for either next week or the week after, uh, for surveillance testing. Uh, Mr. Baker would like to, uh, there's about approximately twenty seniors that would like to be tested. Uh, we wanted to test our first responders and some, and city employees who have contact with the public. Um, as you know, we continue to be in contact with the public as city workers, and, um, the county health official is, we're sort of one of the priority groups to be tested. Uh, the, and then they believe that they have a, a capacity of approximately seventy tests that they want to do in Willis. And I want to open that up to the public, and as soon as we sort of, uh, get it, uh, an idea of exactly when that's going to be, um, I'm gonna be putting that out there and, and ask our overview to put that out there as well to anybody who would want to volunteer to be tested, it is voluntary. And it is for people who are not symptomatic. Uh, if you are sick, you do not want to take this test. We want you to take this test if you're feeling well, and to see, uh, get a, get an idea about the spread of the virus. Um, I believe Ukiah is also arranging for some, um, surveillance testing as well. And really the key is to keep on testing around the county to get an idea of, of where we are. Unfortunately, we have not been able to keep up with testing, um, although in Brown Valley and in the Covalo area right now, they, they continue to test a, a number of people every day. And so, so that's a great comfort. Um, the, uh, people have asked me regarding the sewer testing. We were excited because, uh, the, the Stanford University had reached out through our water board and asked if we wanted to be sort of a guinea pig in testing our effluent, uh, our sewer. And we said absolutely, and unfortunately, when we got back to them, they decided that they no longer wanted to test us. They found a, they were looking for sort of a test case in a rural area. Um, they decided to use a city nearer to their university. Um, so we, we could not get tested. We then reached out to the water board and to the agency that tested Lakeport. Apparently, um, that was, that program was through MIT, and then we were not eligible for that testing program. Um, both Scott Herman and myself, we've, we've reached out and, and to see whether there's any other ways we can, um, test our sewer effluent, and, and so far, we're, we are not able to do that. So unfortunately, we're not gonna get those results. But we keep on trying and releasing messages, but the water board is, they, they are, they were not in charge of it, they only were sort of a, uh, the, the Stanford University was just going through them. Uh, it wa, it wasn't their program, so that's unfortunate. Um, the COVID crisis, we've, uh, heard of, we, we heard today that Frontier Days has closed. Um, the COVID crisis, we've, uh, heard of, we, we heard today that Frontier Days has closed. Um, we have also heard there are lots of cancellations throughout the county and the state. The state fair, we just learned, um, has been canceled. The county fair in Ukiah has been canceled, the Ukiah Fair. Um, I am told that the salmon, uh, salmon fast has also been canceled or, or put off. And, um, and now our, our 4th of July festivities are put off and that's very, very sad, but it's for the, the safety of, of our, of our county. Um, as you know, we're getting a number of new, uh, orders that come down. We had a new one come down on Friday, uh, late Friday. We were expecting it. We had had drafts, but we didn't get a final. And unfortunately, the, the county has to react to the state and they had to make some, you know, changes to their order to comply with the state's order on Friday. And we are now in stage two of shelter in place and that allowed, um, additional businesses to open. Um, however, the businesses that are non essential businesses that are allowed to open are still delivery only and, um, and curbside, uh, curbside pickup. The, um, I have as a city, we received, you know, since there was some confusion about what that meant, um, we did receive some clarification from the county and we've been trying to talk to business owners that have not been compliant. Um, and, um, that's been a mixed result and we hope that, um, so I, I did reach out to the county and, and the county has, uh, informed us that, uh, that we are to call county code enforcement if we get, if we see non compliance with the order and county code enforcement will, uh, investigate and do investigation and they will refer any enforcement to our local police department. Um, I do have, uh, the chief here on the line and we don't know how that's going to work, but, uh, this is just what I've been told by the county and, um, that's, that's where we are. Um, in terms of our public facilities, we're excited that, that we're going to open the dog park on Friday. We mowed, it's ready to go. Um, we're working on, uh, this today. We heard that, uh, swim programs for children are now going to be encouraged to, to commence. So we're working on that. It will only be on for steady groups of under, under 12 kids or less. And, uh, we're, uh, working with our pool manager to make that happen. But again, these activities will be only for children and the pool will not be open, uh, for adults whatsoever. Um, and as for any other COVID related activities, I don't think I have anything else. Um, I would like to, if the chief would like to comment or if the council would like to comment at this time, um, I'm open for questions.
Is the chief on? Um, if he's available, it's not that open at the council, he's a chair.
Oh, I know he's planning to be.
Okay. Then I guess I'll, see council members. Sorry, hello, mayor. Hello. Oh, yeah. 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 I'm so sorry. This is Chief Allen. Yes, I am on and available for any questions, sir. Okay. I, I guess I thought maybe you were going to make a statement or something regarding the, uh, the enforcement of the COVID orders or anything like that. Uh, do you have any comments there?
I, I certainly do, mayor. Thank you. Um, good evening, uh, mayor and honorable council member. So, uh, we have been, uh, in constant, almost daily contact with the county. We know that, uh, that, uh, this is a confusing and challenging time specific to, uh, our businesses and some of the, uh, as, as we move forward, uh, of course, our first, uh, our first response I, I feel as a police department is community education. So I've been working closely with the chamber. We've been contacting, uh, individual businesses and, and of course, uh, officers are giving extra patrol. So, uh, community education is extremely important as is voluntary compliance. We acknowledge that this is a very, very difficult time for businesses. Uh, however, we need everybody's voluntary compliance and cooperation as we move through this phase, uh, phase two. Uh, uh, what, what we do know is that the county health department has a health and safety code, which they have made available to law enforcement. Uh, it is my hope, uh, and expectation that it never gets that far. We, we have a great business community and we're just asking everybody for voluntary compliance and, uh, we're getting through this. So my hope, so, so what our city manager was describing is in the event that, uh, that there is a health and safety violation, what the county health department has told us that their code enforcement will not be the entity that, uh, that actually writes the citation, that would actually be our police department here. Uh, that obviously puts us in a very precarious situation should we have to cite anybody. I do not anticipate that happening. Everybody has been wonderful. I have personally contacted businesses and they, uh, they were very, very happy to comply and move their merchandise to, uh, to within their businesses. And, uh, I just think it's very, very important that we acknowledge and thank them for their patience and their cooperation. And, um, you know, we don't want to ever be put in a situation at the Willis Police Department where we would have to construct and cite our, our very own businesses. So thank you, everybody, for your cooperation. I am available for questions.
Does anybody have any questions with chief?
I do. This is Greta. Um, Chief Allen, I've gotten a couple of comments from, um, residents over the past week and a half who have been trying to use some of the, um, open fields at our schools, at our local schools. And they have gone to let their kids run around on some grass, get a little walk, get some exercise. And they have all been met by Willis PD who have given stern warnings, letting them know they are not allowed to use those fields. And I'm wondering if since the new revised, um, public health order has opened up opportunities for public recreation, if our residents will still be getting those warnings from the PD, I'd like some clarity for the public on whether or not the school field can be used if people are maintaining physical distance and taking all appropriate safety precautions.
And I'm going to jump in here just real quick in that the school fields, it is up to, uh, since we don't own that as a city, it is up to the school district to determine whether or not that's a field that they want to open. Um, if the school district chooses to close that field because it is owned by the school district and not by the city, um, we would force that. We would enforce that. So just, sorry, I lost the scroll.
So the police are enforcing it now or at least have been in the last couple of weeks. So my question is what's actually happening on the fields and can people use them?
So, okay, ma'am. Right. I'm sorry.
And, and we can reach out to the school district. I don't know. I, it was my understanding that the school district had not opened their fields. Um, what I can do is I can reach out to the school district to see whether they plan to open those fields. Um, if they do, they're, they need to, to provide signage and various things. There, there are sort of conditions to opening up, uh, uh, those fields. Um, and I can talk to the school district to see whether they plan on opening those. But at this time, I don't know. So I'll, I'll find out.
This is Suprema. And we have our own city fields and I'm unclear as to, I, I just got an email explaining that we were going to ease slowly into it, but, uh, our kids need, uh, they need an outlet for their mental health. The governor has stated that, uh, he wants to see this happen. Our county health order, uh, encouraged it. I'm unclear as to why. I just heard that the, uh, the dog park will open up, but the city, the city fields won't be open or I, I thought, I thought that that was a council decision and it seems that the fields are still closed. Could you update us, please?
Um, yes, I believe Cannon and the chief met, uh, to regarding the fields and, and I'm, when I was not here, um, and we did, the county, the county allowed opening depending on various factors and whether it was safe or not. So that's why we, we chose a graduated opening. Um, and as things progress, we're going to be opening those fields. The, I know that, um, I know Cannon's on the line, the chief's on the line. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. This is Chief Allen. So, uh, what we've, what we've done with the city park, as you know, is, uh, we, we set out criteria on, on, on the use of the city park. We have, uh, uh, for the, for the time being, uh, blocked off the playground areas and that type of thing. However, people can still, uh, on a limited basis, use the park. They cannot, uh, at this point, uh, we, we, we just can't have large groups. So, uh, no soccer games, no birthday parties and those types of things, obviously. And please understand that, uh, that all of this, uh, and I want to go back to, um, what, what our council member, uh, said about the police giving stern warn, warnings. Please understand that, uh, that those warnings, uh, they've been directed to approach people and educate people in a very friendly manner, uh, whether it be, uh, wearing a mask or, or those types of issues that might endanger them. And so, uh, I know that you understand the spirit of, uh, trying to keep the community safe and, 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 uh, walk that very, very, uh, uh, fine balancing line and keeping you all safe as we move out of this phase. So yes, I've instructed the officers to just educate people and talk to people, um, uh, as, as they're entering these areas. But, uh, yeah, that, you know, I don't, I don't know whether that could be characterized as a stern warning or, or just trying to be cognizant of everybody's safety.
And we do anticipate that all grassy areas will be open. It's, um, it's just we wanted to have it graduated. And so this, this weekend, I think that we're going to see more. We do need to, to do some mowing. Um, but I, I think, is Cannon, are you still on the line?
Yes. Um, well, we have, we actually, at, at the initial order, we felt it was safest to keep the grass tall on the athletic fields and to keep them cordoned off because there's just too many circles. There's too many bleachers. There's too many places that we can't guarantee public safety under the protocols in place. Um, we're following the county public health and state protocols, which ultimately dictate any decisions we make, um, as the situation develops. And everybody knows that's an evolving process, um, sometimes overnight. And sometimes their orders aren't always out in a timely manner. Sometimes they're delayed. Sometimes they're late. And if it comes out at, you know, 5:30 on Friday, then we have to decide whether it's a call out to get our guys out and try to motivate and open up something for the weekend. Um, at this point, we've been trying to conserve money because it gets, it's very expensive. Like we get into fencing, um, barricades, signs, um, all these things are, are just kind of falling into place and we have to be in compliance and we have to ensure that we keep the public informed and safe before we move forward. Um, we've been really kind of erring on the side of caution because we don't want to be the ones to make the jump. And it's hard when you, when you open something up, you essentially flip a switch and you have to see, um, how the public reacts and make sure that everyone is following the order and that everybody is safe because that's our primary concern. And we, we feel like we've opened up some large areas with people directly in play within their family groups, um, within our control groups. And we encourage people to use those. Um, our staff works hard to keep them clean and to keep them usable. We want to see people in those facilities. And we have, we're all grandparents, we're all parents and we all are dog owners. So we, we want to see these things happen in the community just as that as anybody else. So please put the message out there for people to use the appropriate fields that are open and to use them in compliance. And then we can continue as the order changes and we move into other phases of the reopen California roadmap that, that we can open other fields and facilities as, as time allows. Uh, we appreciate everybody's patience. Um, I know everyone's getting antsy, you know, it's spring, the weather's nice. We all want to be outside. But that's kind of where we're at. And I just wanted to report out. So thank you.
And this is, this is Chief Allen. And, uh, we took all of this in consideration as we tried to, uh, build the time, uh, the time from seven to seven, seven days a week so that people could get out and recreate and do those things. So we're slowly moving into that and, and believe me, everything that we do, as Cannon, uh, correctly put it, uh, the basis for that is, is just community safety in light of everything. So just bear with us and, uh, we're, we're open to project them, but, but, uh, we're trying to, uh, exercise, uh, an abundance of caution while at the same time honoring what everybody's going through. Thank you.
I could ask one more thing. I, I genuinely appreciate that the, the focus is on safety. Um, but I don't want to, uh, let us forget that, uh, that the public does have rights and that these decisions, uh, I'm concerned about where the decisions are being made. Uh, we were, the council was elected to represent the voice of the people. And I want to make sure that we as a council are setting the policies that, uh, decide whether or not we're giving the discretionary, um, ability, we're giving up those rights to, to managers to make those decisions or whether we're as a council are setting policy. And I know that at the last meeting, I felt like, uh, we gave Stephanie kind of, we, we weren't very clear on what our, what our expectations were. I know for myself, I had hoped that the message was that when the county opens it up, we open it up. And it didn't appear that way. It appears, well, it is, that, uh, city staff has taken a position to make their own discretion. And we answer to the public and they want to know, um, who, who, who's setting policy. But I think that what I would like to see from council is a clear consensus and direction to you so that I can support when somebody asks me who gave direction, you know, that we're all giving, that we're all on the same page about how we're going to move forward. Are we going to follow the orders as they are? Or is, are we going to allow city management to hold back on certain, implementing certain measures of the, uh, the county order to either make it, um, to make it more, um, restrictive than say the county health officer has, which is, in some states is what we have right now. So I just want to hear from the rest of the council, their feelings if they could.
Um, I would just like to state, this is Stephanie, um, that the county health order does state that the recreational facilities that they approved opening would be open on a condition that a city could do so, uh, with adequate safety and with adequate signage. And so that's what city staff was looking at is what can we open safely? And just, that is what we've been really wrestling with and we have been, um, basically we're, we're trying to move forward. And thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question regarding this?
I guess, sorry, this is Madge. I'm not entirely clear where we are in that context because, um, you think that weeks ago at the council meeting, um, was right before the health sidelines came out in the state, state and county, that we, um, essentially gave up leffings to opening up some of the open park areas, uh, provided it could be done with, um, adequate basic precautions, uh, but not, not things like the playgrounds or the skate parks. So I thought we gave that direction and it sounds like that's what you're doing, but it takes a little bit of time just to make sure the signage is up, to make sure that the public that does use those open areas follows the necessary protocols. So, uh, if that's what we're doing, then I think the staff is carrying out the, the guidance that the, uh, the policy business council gave two weeks ago. Um, and I, and I think that's really appropriate. And if it does take a few days to get signage up or the- And if it does take a few days to get signage up or to, you know, make sure that the grass is mowed, that's understandable.
Greta, do you have anything, or Larry? I have some things, but I wanted to let you guys weigh in.
No, I do not, this is Larry.
Greta, do you have anything or reference?
Yeah, this is Greta. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the position that the public works department is in and the police department in trying to walk that line between providing public safety and public access. However, I do feel that to many members of the community, and this is based on the comments that I get from the public, there is a sense of frustration. People have been cooped up now for two months, the weather is getting good. We have had very few incidences of coronavirus here in our county. A lot of people are recognizing there's a tremendous difference between our region and more populated regions to the south of us. And so there is a growing sense of we need a little more regional, specific freedom here, opening of some access. And so there are kind of hints from the state and from the county in the direction that things are moving. And so while I recognize that it takes a few days, especially if an order comes in on a Friday night, it's not like we didn't know it was coming. And so I guess I would just ask that the city recognize that there is a pent-up demand for these facilities that our community pays for. And I would like us to be cognizant. And I know you all are, and I don't mean this as a criticism, I'm just sharing, because this is my job as a council person, to share what the community is asking for from its local government, is that people would like access and they would like it sooner rather than later. And I know that puts you into a difficult position, I'm sorry, but that is what the public is wanting. And so I do feel like it's my role to tell you that and to let you know that your efforts are appreciated and more effort would be appreciated also. So thank you for listening.
Well, thank you, but I, you know, this is Jerry again, and I just, I guess I kind of want to echo what Madge is. I think we kind of knew it was coming, but I also appreciate, we don't have a lot of staff and I would apologize to the public, you know, it's not like other places that have, you know, hundreds, public works workers or whatever, we don't have that many. And I know that they're burdened with a lot of extra work. And so I think as long as I'm seeing progress, I'm content. I think the message has been delivered to city staff that the public wants it, but that we've got to be able to do it safely. And having been in a profession where people didn't always follow the rules, I kind of want things mowed and safe for when they go out there and the appropriate signage being up. Because that's kind of what we want from the school, too. If they're going to open up their recreation facility, that they're going to be in a position of having to do their maintenance and their signage. And I think we have to set a good example as a city. That's what I've got. Stephanie, did you have any other updates on the project or anything else?
Um, not really. What we were hearing is that, you know, we're going to be gradually opening things up. But one of the problems we have in Mendocino County is that people have been telling, yeah, we don't have any cases, but at the same time, we also haven't had any testing. And that's really been a struggle for the county health officials, the fact that because we didn't have a lab, because we don't have comprehensive testing, and we haven't met those metrics. We don't know how accurate the fact that we think we don't have any, but that's why we want to do surveillance testing. That's why we needed so badly to get these lab facilities in our county so that we can really prove that we're doing well. Bay Area cities are not doing so well and they're right near us. So we just want to make sure that we do strike a balance, make sure that we have the testing metrics to show that we are keeping people safe. Again, the fields, it is a directive of the order that the playgroups need to be only children and not adults. They need to be in groups of less than 12. We don't really have the staff to enforce that, but we will be. Obviously, if we see people, once we open up the play areas, if there are large groups of kids and more than 12 and study playgroups, that's going to be a problem. And we're probably going to, according to the, I mean, this is just obeying the health order and this is what we've been told by the county, and they are following the state guidelines. And so we're just trying to be safe. And I totally understand, I think we all feel cooped up and we will move forward in opening up as much as we can. I'll be frank, I think we all recognize the skate park is going to be a problem. There are a lot of surfaces there. And the only city that's opened the skate park that I know of is Ukiah. And they are actually posting somebody at the gate, allowing only 12 people to use it at a time and sort of watching folks to make sure that they don't violate any of the rules. Obviously, we don't have the staff to do that. If council directs me to open that, we will do it. And if they, we're just trying to do our best in trying to, you know, open up what we feel is safe and what we can control. But of course, if the council wants us to do more, we will do that. And so that is, it is your pleasure to do that. And we just, what I would not recommend doing is violating the county health order because that is following the state. And we have seen instances throughout the state where there are violations of the order. It jeopardizes our funding, our potential for COVID funding. And we certainly don't want to get in that situation. Going back to the businesses, you know, we're also, you know, the chief, we're in a difficult position. We totally understand, we want to be understanding of businesses and we understand the difficulties they're going through. And I guess we need some guidance from council as well. Because if the county tells us that a business is not complying with the order and that our police is supposed to enforce that, is, does this council support that? And I guess I need to hear from you as well on that. Because again, it does put us in a really hard position. But if you want to direct us, otherwise than what we're doing, we need to hear from you. So please do so. But this is the time.
Okay, would anybody like to speak to this?
This is Supreme.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Supreme.
I was just going to say that in any enforcement, my concern would be making sure that you're enforcing the rules across the board. I'm concerned about potential liability now and down the road to the city in terms of enforcement. The county has had the number that you can report businesses. And it is widely known that there is a blind eye that has been turned and is continuing to be turned from business to business. And that the rules are very, the rules themselves have lots of gray area. And sometimes there's a mixed message even between, say, a governor's speech and the county order and from county to county. So I just think that we need to be really careful. I think that that's why a lot of cities are focused on education rather than enforcement because there is so much gray area. And I would hate to see City of Willis either be aggressive towards the business community, which is your task area, and also put us in any kind of financial position with lawsuits down the road. Those would be my two concerns.
Would anybody else like to speak to this?
Okay, I'll just ask, Jim, do you want to weigh in on this? Jim Lantz, do you have any? I just want to say, Jim, I'm not going to direct the city not to enforce the rules. But, and I do believe in education first because these are our local residents, but, Jim, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, I think, I think that we do have an obligation to enforce regulations. And so if our police department determines that someone is violating rules, I would assume that the police department would seek cooperation and would strive to educate. And if it turns out that someone, after being politely requested, insists that they're not going to comply, then I assume that our police department would issue a citation. I had been under the impression until this meeting that the county code enforcement office was going to become active in enforcing these regulations. But I'm hearing this meeting that that's not the case. So apparently, our police department.
I was actually told by the county that, you know, because when there's, we have tried to do education of those business owners that we felt were not following the law. We have asked the county and they have given us guidance and we've tried to pass that along. We asked what we should do about enforcement. At first, they said that the code enforcement for the county would be doing the enforcement. Carmel Angelo though then informed me that actually the county code enforcement cannot act within city limits of Willis. And therefore, what they would do is they would investigate the situation and they would ask the police, our local police force to enforce the order. And so that is where we are right now. And obviously, it puts our police in a difficult position because there are certain situations that have been happening that the county has clearly said, no, that's not okay. And it makes it hard. We don't want to come down hard on businesses because this is a very difficult time. At the same time, we have told other businesses and they said, absolutely, I understand and I didn't understand and oh, I understand now. And their concern is they just wanted to make sure that we are enforcing it across the board. And that's always hard when there's going to be somebody who decides that they don't want to comply. And so that's the part, it's really hard.
Stephanie, are you saying that?
I have a question, too.
Sure.
I just was curious, so you're saying that the county is saying that their code enforcement is not, does not work in city limits and so then it falls to local PD. Is the county actually contacting the city and telling you about businesses that are not in compliance? Or is the city finding those on their own? I'm just curious.
We are getting complaints and we're finding them on their own and we see clear violations. And then we've been encouraged to call the county if we have a question, it's like, hey, what did we do? And they said that their county code enforcement will give us guidance and tell us what's right and what's not right. And we're trying to educate. And then the last step is enforcement and that's always a difficult step.
This is Chief Allen, if I might make a statement here? Yep, so, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Hi, Chief. Hello, I'm sorry, can you hear me? This is Chief Allen. Hi, Chief. Okay, I'm sorry. So we get our information in several different ways. We get approximately four to five communications from the county via email on businesses and individuals and just general issues surrounding this health crisis that they forward to us. Some of it is for, just for our information. Other information is specific to problems or concerns here within Willis. So what I've tried to do and what I have done, I think within three weeks to a month ago, is in the spirit of education, I have reached out to the businesses via our chamber to just reassure them, stay in contact with them, the different businesses, offer our help and support, extra patrols and whatever the business community feels that we can do in this situation. So we've used the media, you've seen articles. We're trying to educate the public about what we are trying to do in this very difficult situation. But again, I need to really, really reiterate that that enforcement piece, in my view, we should never have to do that. We don't want to be in the position, be put in the position in our own community where we have that type of issue with our businesses. We're all part of the same community. So I want to reiterate that what we've been doing is community education. We've been listening to the business owners and we're hoping for voluntary compliance with these issues. It would be very, very unfortunate, in my view, if we had to actually write citations for businesses within our own city. And we're trying to do this very objectively, very fairly. We're trying to educate people. But the problem exists is that if one or two businesses decide that they're not going to follow the order when the rest of our businesses in town are having the same challenges of following these directives, then it's very easy for people to point to the police department as a deep fault and say that we're playing favorites and that type of thing. We want to avoid that situation and we're just asking for everybody's voluntary compliance. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other questions regarding the staff regarding the subject?
I'd like to comment, this is Madge. Yep. Yeah, I just think that, at least from my perspective, acknowledging the difficulties that our merchants and businesses are having absolutely breaks my heart. But at the same time, the health of the community has to be the first priority and that means following the guidelines and the protocols that have come down from public health and from the state. So, and to remind you that even though we don't have any known, we have no known cases in Willis and very few in the county, that could change in a matter of a day. And every day it could turn around and we could suddenly have community spread and we wouldn't even know it for a while because you don't have symptoms right away. And I think Stephanie has said a number of times, the testing is not up to where we need it to be to have any confidence that we don't already have it in our community. So even when testing happens, we still have to follow the protocols because again, once it starts to spread, it can be exponential. So I do think it's imperative that we continue to insist on and educate first and ask for voluntary compliance, absolutely. But if there are any businesses that after doing all of that are still refusing to be compliant, I think it is our job to apply the law across the board fairly to everybody and not allow any businesses to continue and frequently not observe, they can affect all of us. And by the way, as far as, you know, rights are concerned, I think the right to life is the first one. And then you have freedom, but you have freedom only if you're protecting everybody else's freedoms fully and protecting their health is part of that. So it's not okay to say, I am free to go around in public without my mask and sneeze on people and cough at people. That's not okay. That's not an allowable freedom. So anyway, this is a bit of a non-conspire speech, but I think it's very important that we know that our people are authorized to enforce if necessary after they've done everything else.
This is Jerry again. I just want to point out, and Stephanie said earlier about testing, that yesterday at the governor's press conference, he did kind of apologize to Lake in Mendocino County that he felt he hadn't done a that he felt he hadn't done it properly as far as testing and that they were working on that. And so I thought I'd mention that, that they apparently have not forgotten us, but apparently up until this date, they haven't been doing us as good as other places. So that's one thing. So-
Can I make a question, Jerry?
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to say that the direction that I would like to give personally is I'm very uncomfortable with the idea of this city issuing any kind of citations or strict enforcement on our local businesses if they're not in compliance. I think I disagree that public health is the most important thing. I think that the way we have to look at this whole situation right now is a balance. Public health is of course important. Protecting our healthcare system is of course important. But our local businesses are suffering unduly. The small businesses in our community, the salons, the bars, the gyms, the movie theater are taking the brunt of the economic impact. While places like Walmart and Costco are open and full and not enforcing social distancing and selling non-essential goods. And I just think that there is a high level of frustration that businesses in our community are absorbing the hit. And to think that our city would actually enforce that with citations or some kind of firmer action is really mind-boggling to me. So I understand you're in a very difficult position of walking that line. I appreciate very much the education tactics, trying to work with the business community. I think that you're doing a very good job of having that be the first approach. I personally would be uncomfortable if it escalated beyond that. That's my input and direction.
And I'm in full agreement with Brad. I just want to make sure that I reiterate those are my feelings as well.
And Jim, another question for Jim. What happens if we don't enforce? Obviously, the state could come in down the road and say we obviously didn't have an emergency or something, but what other things could happen to us? I'm just curious.
I'm not really sure I understand. You're asking what kind of consequences could the state or county impose on the city if the city doesn't enforce? And let its citizens and business owners do whatever they want?
Yes, that's it.
I really don't know. Stephanie mentions that perhaps we would be ineligible for COVID-related funding. And Stephanie has a better answer than I do on that.
I know that, well, if there's a law, I don't know. This is tough. I mean, there's a government code section that states that it is- That you cannot ignore a public health order, that you need to follow the public health order. And that's a government code section that is being violated. If we decide not to enforce a law in law of the state of California, that is certainly new territory for me as a city manager. I don't know what the consequences of that is. I think that personally, I mean, I take an oath. And so that's hard for me as both a lawyer and as a city manager. That's sort of my oath is to follow the laws of the state of California, so that's tough for me. And I know that there's one county that decided to have a big old rodeo and they received despite the order. And they came down quite, the state came down quite hard on them. And I certainly don't want to be put in that position. At the same time, I have the city manager again, and our police chief being put in a position of, if you want to ask us not to- I'm not sure, ma'am. I guess I need to hear them all five council members on this, whether there's going to be a council decision that we are not going to- They don't want us to enforce the law. I think that I need to hear that and decide where to go from there and maybe we research that.
Well, I'll start off with me. I'll tell you that I spent years enforcing the law and I'll be honest with you, I probably would have resigned as police chief if I was told by the council not to enforce a law. First, the tactic our current chief is taking of trying to educate, et cetera. I mean, I always wanted voluntary compliance. And yeah, I'll tell you what, I would hate to be the guy having to enforce this, but it's one of those that if I did enforce it, I would hope my city would back me. That's what I'm going to say on it. So I am not going to order city staff not to enforce laws, but I would hope they would use the tax and educate. Would anybody else like to speak?
Well, I know that this seems odd, but there are many laws that we don't always necessarily follow. I mean, there's a federal law that says that you're not supposed to be growing cannabis, but yet we have the city ordinance that says that you can't. So and then we have a constitution and we all took an oath. And I don't know, there's just, this is not a black and white issue. Apparently, this is a gray area issue. And I still stand on the fact that I'm not comfortable with anybody receiving a citation. I think that we're not in a situation where we have COVID-19 running rampant in our community and education is sufficient.
Would anybody else like to speak?
Yeah, I'm hearing two and two and I need to hear three people say the same thing so I can go forward.
I guess I can say I'm one of the people on the council. I think we ought to follow the state and what the county's saying. And I was in business, I'm no longer in business, but I do understand where they're coming from. But also, public safety is my priority right now. Thank you.
So this is Jerry and the only thing is I would like to know what possible consequences. Just maybe at the next meeting, I don't need the answer right away, but Jim or Stephanie, just so that- You know, I think the public needs to know that we're not taking it lightly making these decisions, but at the same time, why we have to make these decisions, et cetera. And obviously, we want to work with people, educate with people and whenever possible, allow for some latitude, but when it's allowed for under the law. I want to see things open up. I myself, maybe to kind of see things open up. I want to see us work with our local business community, whether it be restaurants, et cetera, so that we do plan ahead for the next phase, so that whether it be outside dining, if we can do our part to waive any fees on the part of the city to allow it or to streamline the process so that we can show businesses we are trying to help. And I just think that. But that's just again, something so that we have something more to back us up.
So what I'm hearing-
I'll get back to you on that.
And so what I'm hearing for now is that the city staff is not being told to not enforce the law, which I am obviously happy to hear. We are going to try to educate and give people leeway, but to the extent that I am told by the county that a certain action of an individual or a business is violation of the order, our police chief and we'll be enforcing that. And that's kind of our job. And I think that those rules were obviously are out there. So we will be complying with the law and that's what I've heard. If that is not what I've heard, this is your chance to tell me otherwise. And I appreciate the discussion. I think it's been a really good discussion and I appreciate it.
Just a quick question. Did I, clarifying question. Did I understand our sheriff correctly when he- I thought that I recently saw that he made a public statement that he would not be enforcing it in the county and he would not be issuing any citation. So I'm a little unclear as to why the county would insist that the city enforce it if the sheriff's department, the county's own department is not enforcing it. Or am I mistaken and are they enforcing it now? Do you have any clarification?
Well, I can answer that a little bit, Sabrina. That at the county, they have code enforcement officers that write those citations. We could empower our code enforcement officer to issue civil citations, but I don't know that we have that policy in place. So and county enforcement issues those citations for them. And I'm sure the sheriff's position was, he's got deputies dealing with- Obviously, I would assume it would happen here too, that if you had a complaint like this and a murder or rape, that the police department would take the priority call first and then deal with the other call afterwards. But and anybody want to jump in behind what I just said?
Yeah, Jerry, that's exactly my understanding, is that the actually it went to the board of supervisors to give code enforcement for the county that put the enforcement power so they do write citations. And that's the way it is in the county. Other cities took that act. I believe UCAIA may have given their code enforcement officer the power to write citations as well.
Yeah, I know I saw Sheriff Kendall, his Facebook interview that he gave and I thought that it was clear that he was not going to enforce. So I'm a little-
Well, the county administrator has absolutely enforces the orders through the code enforcement officers.
And again, code enforcement for the county does not work for the sheriff's department. They're their own entity. They work for building and planning.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Otherwise, I think we're at item nine B.
I have a few other just sort of updates that is non-COVID related. I just wanted to let folks know. We have had, you know, our various departments are going to weigh in later and they have some things to say. And one of those things is we have seen an absolute uptick in homeless activity and the chief will speak more to that later. We have a, there was a question regarding our animal control contract. That is, we do have a contract with the county. I am told that we have the same number of hours that we have always had. It's a $22,000 a year contract and there has been no break in that. I have not heard any complaints from the public for the lack of activity with the animal control and that has not changed. I did, was in on a lengthy presentation with PG&E regarding PSPS and PG&E's preparation for PSPS and wind events and hardening of the lines. They have represented, they have done quite a bit of work in the last year trying to not only keep our areas safe, but try to ensure that we are not going to experience the level of PSPS's that we did last year, which I was really excited about. We have also signed a contract with PG&E. They are going to be renting our community center. If we do have a PSPS, they are renting our community center and using it as a community resource center. They are going to be installing a generator system at their expense and hardwiring it into the community center for our youth when they're not there. And they will be manning that and if this happens again. And so that was very exciting. And so we signed that and now they're going to be doing some work for our community center. We have, HR is going to be speaking later on some updates. We've got a new 1,000 gallon gas tank in our courtyard. This was in our budget. It came in way under budget, but this way, if in a PSPS event, we will not have to have as many deliveries as we had last time of fuel. And this is a really nice thing to see, a brand new 1,000 gallon diesel gas tank in our yard. I have also had questions regarding antibody testing in Mendocino County. I probably should talk about later. There is no county antibody testing in Mendocino County at this time. If you want antibody testing to see whether you've ever had it in the past, if the COVID in the past, that is possibly available at your doctor's office. You can ask your doctor, but the county is not making that available. They do not feel that that is a reliable indicator of whether or not you had. There's a lot of false positives and negatives. I believe that is it for our general items. The last item I wanted to talk about is our Support Local Recovery Coalition with the League of California Cities. This is a, and what I'm, the League of California Cities is putting together a very broad coalition to just advocate for additional funds to go to local governments for recovery efforts. And I would like the council's permission to sign on to Willetts to be a part of that. And I would like to get a vote on that and also to be able to send a letter in support of that on behalf of the city of Willetts so we can be a signatory of that action.
Is that the average of the items?
And that is eight C. That's the off-agenda item. That's the Support Local Recovery Coalition with the League of California Cities.
That is the item you're introducing right now then?
Are you seeking for a motion?
Yes.
I would like to do that. This is Larry.
Second that. Second the motion.
Larry making the motion. Do I have a second?
I will second it. This is Madge.
Second. Do I have any further discussion? Do I have anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, we're going to back up here. Kathy, can you give me a roll call?
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Merrick Gonzalez.
Yep.
Councilmember Strong, are you there? Or Connie, are you there?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was having technical difficulties. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, motion carried. Stephanie, I think you got direction on that one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll move it on to department recommendations. I know people are waiting in the wings to talk about things.
All right, we'll start off with item A first. Discussion possible, action approving, planning specifications for the city of Willetts, slurry seal and pavement preservation project number 2001, authorizing advertising and bids.
Mr. Pro, yeah, hi, this is Jim Bearme, project manager. Yeah, so this is just the continuation of the project, you know, we started last year with the slurry seal. We're conducting the bid the same way. We have a list of streets and a price limit and we hope to get all of them, but we'll just see. But, you know, I think it went pretty well last year. We learned, you know, a couple of things, but overall, I think it was fairly successful. And again, this does take advantage of the $100,000 state SB1 price match, just like last year. So we get a lot of fame for our product out of this project. And I think we're sort of exhausting our slurry sealable streets for a little while if we do get this one done. So, yeah, you know, I don't know. Do you guys have any questions or?
I do, yes, my question is just, mostly for the public, this is Jerry. This is basically just sealing, basically, the slurry seal and to kind of keep things going, and this would not be actual pavement, and I know we've had some folks speak at prior meetings, and I don't know if they're in attendance today, but this wouldn't answer their concerns, but this is mostly for you guys to use your, basically, your analysis, which needed to keep them going longer, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's basically, you know, conventionally accepted in the industry that maintaining your good streets through slurry sealing is more cost effective than letting them deteriorate and then repaving, which is sort of the old practice. So this is just a way to keep our nice streets nice. You know, some of the, like, the Hill Creek subdivision is a good example, if you drive down it, you can see it's starting to fail, and that's just a, that's, you want to hit that with the slurry seal and prevent it from failing further. And that's sort of the ideal with crack sealing and slurry sealing, it's preventative maintenance.
And comparing that to some of the streets that were mentioned from some concerns of the public, that wouldn't address those concerns, again, this is just to preserve some of the streets, because I think the discussion we've had in the past is why are we paving streets that are slurring streets that looked okay compared to the Mooncraver Street, so to speak, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is effort from the road priority list, basically. You don't want a slurry seal bad streets, it'll just fail immediately, it's kind of a waste of money, but it does work well on good to, you know, sort of above average streets, that's what it's for.
All right, that's the only question I had. I'll first go ahead and ask anybody from the council if they have any questions. Greta, do you have any questions with Jeremy on this?
Yes, I was just wondering, Jeremy, if you could, for the edification of the public, give us an idea of what other street projects the city will tackle this year, so that folks will know if some streets that actually aren't in decent repair will get some attention this year, as well as this slurry seal project.
We're hoping to do a digout project too this year, but it's, I'm not sure if we'll get that done or not, and that'll just address specific bad spots. There are a couple streets, like East Commercial, that if we do perform digouts on those streets, they will become good candidates for slurry seal in the future, but we don't have any just full street paving projects lined up for this year.
So that's listed, the State of the Roads that we heard from last year, there were some projects on that that were slated for this year and next year, those are on hold? Is that the case?
Anything this summer, next summer, you know, obviously, we'll have to take a look, but the priority this year is the slurry seal, the downtown paver tree planting project, finishing up the Maple Street pump station, and then hopefully the digout project too.
Thank you.
Sabrina, do you have any questions with Jeremy?
Not on this item, thank you.
Madge, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Larry?
No, I do not.
Does anybody from the public have any questions regarding this item? Anybody? Okay, I guess I'll bring it back up to council and see if I have a motion.
Just Larry, I'll make the motion to go ahead and do it.
Do I have a second?
No seconds, this is Madge.
All right, seconded by Madge. Any further discussion? If not Kathy, call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Merrick Gonzales?
Yes, thank you, Jeremy. All right, item is discussion of proposed action awarding professional services contract to DUDEX to develop the grant funded urban forest management plan.
And I believe we have Dusty Dooley, our Community Development Director, here to give that report?
You do, thank you, Dusty. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members, Dusty Dooley, your Community Development Director. This is, this is related to the grant funding that we received from CAL FIRE to complete an urban forestry management plan. We completed the competitive selection process, and DUDEX is the consultant company that scored the highest. The selection committee included myself, Jim Robbins, our Community Development Specialist, as well as Chris Wiltz, our local fire chief here. We were happy to review DUDEX's proposal, they have quite a bit of experience working on urban forestry management plans, they actually completed the plan for the City of Los Angeles, currently working for the City of San Jose, and have worked for a variety of other jurisdictions of different sizes, so staff's excited to work with DUDEX on this The, you do have the agenda summary in front of you, as well as the proposed scope of work, which is in the contract, I believe in your packet, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, first of all, Greta, do you have any questions?
No.
Sabrina, do you have any questions? Sabrina? Okay, I'll move on to Madge, do you have any questions?
No questions, thanks.
Larry, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Back to Sabrina, just in case.
Yeah, sorry, somebody tried to call me, I lost the call, my apologies. The question I have is, at the bottom of the agenda item, it talks about the fiscal impact to the budget, and I just got to thinking that every time it's grant funded, it says that there's no fiscal impact, but if fifty, for example, in this situation, if 50% of the staff time is being covered by the grant, logic says that we should be seeing a reduction to the general fund that offsets the cost of what we would have paid in those wages, and typically, when we see an item on here and it's grant funded, it always says that there's no fiscal impact, and I'm wondering if maybe that needs to be amended, because accounting wise, that doesn't seem logical.
Hi, this is Stephanie Gerbert, she's our city manager. What we do when we have a fiscal impact is, the fiscal impact is in comparison with what we budget, and so our, when we do our budget, we actually take into account how much of the grant is staff time and how much is not, so that's actually already been sort of in the mix.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, at this point, I'll open it up to anybody in the public that would like to ask questions, if that's your, anybody referencing this proposal. Is anybody from the company here that would like to speak?
They were unable to make it onto the call.
Okay, so at this point, I'll bring it back up to council and see if I have a motion referencing this resolution.
First of all, it's a staff recommendation.
It's Madge moves, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, this is Larry.
All right, moved by Madge, seconded by Larry, any further discussion? If not Kathy, roll call.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Merrick Gonzales?
Yes, all right, thank you. So, at this point, Dusty, since you're still out there, do you have anything for us?
Um, no, nothing specifically. Oh, I did find out a little interesting fact today, just to kind of give kudos to the city, we, UC Berkeley did an analysis of all the accessory dwelling unit zoning provisions for the state of California and the City of Willett tied for the highest score in the state for our accessory dwelling unit ordinance, and so I just want to thank our consultant group, certainly the staff, and as well as some good insight and direction by the council on that, so just a pat on the back for the City of Willett. Other than that, staying busy, anxious to get some housing proposals in front of you next month, so look forward to that, and, but always be able to answer any questions if the council happens to have any for me.
Does anybody have any questions with Dusty?
I have a question, this is Greta. Hey, Dusty, I sent an email about the CDBG fund possibilities, did you have a chance to look that over?
Yeah, I did, that was from a jurisdiction, Arcadia, not Arcata, but Arcadia. One of the benefits of being a big city like Arcadia is you get automatic entitlement funds through the CDBG program. For us to go after that same type of funds is quite an expensive workload, not that it's something that we weren't already looking into actively. You know, with the CDBG program in general, it has a reputation for being very difficult to navigate. After speaking with other jurisdictions, with staff at the state level, as well as consultants that are very well trained in the CDBG world, it's very likely that we would need to work with a consultant in order to be, to really navigate that full CDBG process. But we, staff has been still talking about this, and Sabrina, I know you want to chime in, but I think we're still trying to collect some additional information and then likely have some information to present to the council in the future.
Thank you. All right, I guess, I don't know if Jeremy's still on the line, but I know there's always questions about pavers and how we're doing on the pavers, so.
Jeremy, are you still there?
Oh, okay, I just got a text from Jeremy, somehow his phone died even though it's still charging. But, some of the additional funds through the CAL FIRE grant that we just spoke about is actually to plant streets throughout the city, including along Main Street there, and, you know, we also recognize that the relinquishment of Main Street's going to be coming up in the coming months, so that sets us up to put an RFP out to do both, establish pavers as well as new street trees within the planting strips along both sides of Main Street, and I would have to get an update from Jeremy as to where we are on the timeline of getting that RFP out. I think we also have some information that, as far as the types of trees that we're looking to plant and some paver designs that we could maybe share with the council, that's one of our goals as well, so hopefully that'll happen sooner than later as well, but I don't have an update from Jeremy as to when we anticipate getting that RFP out to do that work, but that's the next step on our end.
Anybody else have any questions, Dusty? I do have one, but I'll wait and see if nobody else has any questions. Okay, I'll ask now. In reference to, I think I spoke earlier when we were talking about the loosening the restrictions and such, I really want the city to do all it can do to support, and I know that restaurants are going to have to do some, we have a lot of tiny restaurants, they may have to go out on Main Street or the side street there. Is there a way, and again, I don't need an answer today, but is there a way we can streamline our process or make it easier or cheaper for businesses? I also, in reference to your guys' time and what, how much effort you have to put into it, I also get that we don't want somebody monopolizing all your time, but I want to be seen as a city as supporting these businesses as they move towards reopening, and so, have you started kind of thinking about ways you could do that? I'm just curious.
Thank you, Mayor, and just to make sure I understand your question correctly, were you referencing the opportunity to have outdoor seating for restaurants?
Yes, because I know a lot of small ones don't, you know, I, I drive through town, I know that it in them and it's a little cramped and, you know, unless they're going to, you know, how they're going to navigate this, and it may not be impossible, and I know that we have a lot of legislation involved with this, whether it be handicap legislation, et cetera, but, and that we need to do it, and I guess we have issues with liability, so.
Sure. Well, you know, the COVID-19 situation aside, we do have a process set up where businesses can request to have outdoor seating, similar to what you see with the Japanese restaurant right here near City Hall on East Commercial Street, and in fact, that's already been approached by a couple businesses that serve food about the idea, and the process is, is it's a $150 fee and you get an outdoor dining permit, and it actually does go in front of council for approval, so you have the discretion for approval, but Mayor, you are correct in that some of the things that we need to consider before issuing a permit are, you know, are we maintaining ADA compliance sidewalks, so, you know, is the outdoor seating going to take away so much of the sidewalk that someone with a wheelchair wouldn't be able to get by the sidewalk, that's something we need to consider. Sometimes there can be, you know, utilities in the sidewalk that we may need to take into consideration when figuring out where to place that outdoor seating. Certainly, you know, any type of liability issue can come into play, and luckily, we have a very good city attorney to help us with that as well. But yeah, we have a relatively cheap process, and as far as the ability to process those applications in a timely fashion, the council thankfully invested in an assistant planner for the city, and I imagine that Michelle Johnson is quite capable of helping process those applications and get them in front of you.
Again, I'm just thinking of a way maybe we could streamline it without taking away from anything you legally have to do to cover us and them, and I don't want to be caught by surprise that now we move into phase three, or, well, the phase three, I think it's the phase three, and that we are ready to go and now we open it down, so I kind of just want you thinking about that more than anything else.
Yeah, no, thank you, I think staff's going to be very anxious to try to help out if we get some of those requests from some of our local businesses.
All right, thank you. At this point, anybody from public works, do you want to speak?
Well, we go this late, and most of what you were going to say has already kind of been addressed, but I can sort of bring things up to speed a little bit. I just wanted to reiterate as for the parks and the opening of things, that we do have signs and we're ready to open any facilities that were given direction, and we're happy to do so. We are able to get everything mowed and ready pretty quickly as soon as things are given the green light, you know, weather aside, this week has been kind of a challenge, but we do appreciate the rain. We've been running the sweeper still on Fridays, mostly to satisfy our contract with CAL Trans because that does generate revenue, and typically, that takes a few hours, and whatever time the operator has left on his shift, he tries to hit some other streets as time and weather allow. And for the most part, we're just trying to keep everything moving and get everything ready to open as soon as we can.
Could I ask a question for the public?
Absolutely.
Edification, how many people do you have currently right now to do these sort of tasks?
Well, even though we're... Well, even though we're, we have, we have three Public Works employees. One of them typically is assigned to parks as a primary function. And that leaves me two available to assist him and to work on other projects as well. And being that we have other seasonal duties, you know, storm drains, ongoing projects, we've been trying to get some pockets to build, make advantage of the downtime. We've been trying to give every, every, every aspect of the city equal time. And knowing that, that when we do open things up, that there's going to be a bit of a rush. So we've been, we've been trying to stay on top of compliance issues and make sure that we have the signage in place and ready to do so. We just can't, we just can't, we won't just react on anything until we have directives. But please forgive me if, if we haven't been able to get things open as quickly as we would like to. But we are, we're ready to make it happen when we can.
Okay, thank you, sir. And after that, I'm going to move on to our police chief.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I am happy to report that, hello, can you hear me? Is that, sorry. Okay, thank you. So hey, I'm very happy to report that we have a new addition to our Willets Police Department. Officer Chris Kuzmarki came to where he started about a week ago. He does have prior law enforcement experience and very excited to have him. So you'll be seeing a few new faces out there once we're able to get around and do our foot beat, beat, uh, beat boats. So that's one issue. The second thing I have to report is that, as you can imagine, our officers often respond to pretty dangerous emergency calls for service that involve weapons, people with guns. I learned that our public cannot have safety helmets, which are the ballistic type of helmets that they would put on for emergency situations only, that are basically ballistic helmets. They repair bullets. I reached out to the chief of the Los Angeles Police Department and basically told him that we could not, we just don't have the budget to support supplying this very important safety piece of equipment for our officers. So I, I, I'm very humbled to report that the chief of LAPD is going to be donating ten to twelve helmets. These helmets are actually about four thousand dollars apiece. So we're talking about, about forty thousand dollars or more of brand new equipment that are going to keep our officers safe here at Willets. So I am very appreciative for that. And those are the two items that I wanted to talk about. I just want to close my part by, by kind of looping back around to enforcement action and those types of issues that, that are difficult in a situation that we find ourselves in. The police department is, is very proactive. We're using a lot of community education to just get voluntary compliance, both on the shelters, I'm sorry, both, both on the social distancing, the wearing of masks and all of those issues. And I would personally view it as very unfortunate if we were put in the position to have to take any type of enforcement action on any of these things. We are not just standing by, just waiting to cite people and, and, and this problem. So I really, really do look forward to further directions from you all on, on what our approaches should be as, as we deal with this very challenging situation. So thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you, Chief. All right, thank you. My chances are fire chief in the audience. Okay. Guess, Kim Lash, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't.
All right. Kathy, city clerk?
Yes, very quickly, I would like to welcome Stephanie back and thank all of, of city council and city staff for their support last week as it was a very long week. Thank you.
All right. And it's human resources in the audience tonight.
Yes, I am, waiting patiently. Karen Stevenson, your HR analyst. Good evening, Mayor and council members. First, I'd like to take a short moment just to recognize all of the efforts that our Public Works Department has done keeping our streets clean and well-maintained. They are short-ended, and all of them have stepped up as they always do, and they have completely rocked it. If you look down Main Street, our city is really clean looking. And I am anxious for everybody to come back to visit and get out to the shops and stores. And to all of our staff, I'm proud to work with all of you. You've worked double duty to provide services to our community with no complaints and in great spirits. And then everybody here at City Hall is thankful for everything that you do. We, I do want to acknowledge we have a new police officer. Kares Marki joins us on five four, coming over from the Sheriff's Department. So he has a lot of knowledge and experience and he sits well with our team. We do have one of our wastewater operators leaving us on five fifteen, which will make an opening available. We still have one Public Works maintenance worker opening. We have two accountant openings. We have a dispatcher opening and we are providing a test on June first at seven AM for those individuals who want to be test qualified to become an eligible candidate. If they do, they simply need to call dispatch, which is four, five, nine, six, one, two, two, and reserve their spot now. It's not an easy test, but it is a demanding job and one that you will be very proud to say that you're a part of. And we did celebrate internally Dispatcher Week about a month ago, but obviously due to the COVID situation, there was no public announcement. But I did want to publicly recognize the efforts of our dispatchers. They work twenty-four seven. There's only four of them, so they're short one. And our entire law enforcement department has really gone above and beyond for, for probably the last nine months or more. So, you know, we, we don't get a lot of maybe financial benefits, but the recognition from our peers and the way we feel about each other is, it makes up for it. And that's it for me.
And I wanted to just chime on to that, that now that we're, I'm just so grateful that we have our, our new chief on board, Lisa Ral, and these new officers and everybody seeing them out in public. And it's wonderful. And I also have my phone muted. Unfortunately, I wanted to welcome, I wanted to thank Kathy for taking over for me last week because she did a great job. And she checked in with me very often. And she just did a great job. And I appreciate her very much. That's all I wanted to say.
All right. Anybody else I missed? I, so I apologize, you know, chime in.
Can I ask from the finance department?
Oh, yeah.
Um, he was on the call earlier and listening in. He is a part-time person. He is going to be here tomorrow all day, meeting with various people, kind of getting on board. He's also going to be assisting us in trying to hire some more help, which has been really, really difficult. We want to, he wants to start the budget process as soon as possible. Like many cities with the COVID situation, our revenues are going to be really, it's, we're going to be looking at a, a very, a much simpler budget than we did last time. It's going to be a baseline budget. It's going to be very simple. And he's going to be trying to do some forecasting for us. And we already have plans to meet with our, our sales tax consultant. And we'll be working on that. He's also working with the police department as, as the new chief needs to, we need to figure out our, our budget and what's going on in the police department to make sure that we're healthy there. He has a whole list of tasks to take on. And he's going to be, he's, he's leaving at five AM tomorrow morning to get here on time and look forward to seeing him.
Stephanie, I, I would like to at least chat with him for a few minutes at some point. It doesn't have to be tomorrow, but just, just to chat with him.
Oh, absolutely. I can give him your number and have him call you. And anybody who wants to talk to him, that's, that's, you know, that's what he's here for. And, but again, he's still sort of, if you ask him questions, he may need to look things up. He's still talking to June a bit, trying to get on board. He's also been really starting the process. We're, we're still trying to integrate Open Gov. And so he's been on the, all the conference calls to try to integrate all the information necessary to implement our, our, our software program, Open Gov, because that's still a work in progress. But yes, I will give him your number.
All right. I guess at this point, city council committee, boards, and agency reports. Greta?
I've got nothing.
All right, Suprema?
MTA continues to be running on a limited schedule throughout Mendocino County. And the county called on MTA a few weeks back to transport a potential COVID patient. It turned out that they weren't positive, but had to take all the precautions. And so local Willets resident who works for MTA, Jacob, got suited up. And MTA has a vehicle that has been retrofitted to be safe for transporting. And so they're doing a really good job in making sure that the transit services are being used to support the county in this, during the COVID crisis. Like other agencies, everybody's waiting to find out what's going to happen with the budget because there's going to be a shortfall of funding. So we're just waiting to see. I think at some point, Matt and I are probably going to need to at least talk by phone to talk about the mobile ad hog, especially with the way that things are changing. There may be a need to consider that in our community, Matt. So let's put on a touching base in the next couple of weeks after we get a little bit more direction from the governor and, and what they want in the restaurant field. But it, it may be that what we were working on may be something that the community is looking for. Just a thought.
Suprema, on that note, I was going to suggest maybe you and Matt, maybe when we meet, reach out to the health department and, you know, try and bounce some things off of them or at least see what concerns they may be looking at in reference to your.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think that my thought was that we would wait until more information came to light before we, before we jumped in. Because I don't want to start digging and thinking and researching too soon because things are changing so fast. All the research could be nothing. So I, I thought maybe a couple of weeks out, we could, we could start to, to look into it, if that sounds good.
Thank you, Matt. Matt?
Yes, I have three different things I wanted to report on that I'm representing the city. Tomorrow will be a meeting of the Economic Development Financing Corporation, EDFC, in, well, it won't be in UCA. It will be done by, by Zoom tomorrow at two in the afternoon. And I think it's fairly routine what we are looking at, hiring a new general manager for EDFC to replace our interim manager, and then several loan applications. A week later, on May twenty-first, is when we have a, a solid waste management authority meeting at ten in the morning. And that one will probably also be a Zoom meeting. But I don't have anything to report on that yet. The third thing I wanted to, in fact, report on was that Sonoma Clean Power has been, is going ahead with their board meetings monthly. And I attended, even though I was just the alternate, I just got to vote, but it was a very interesting meeting. That was on May seventh. The most interesting item, well, there were a couple of things that might be of interest. One was that Winter now has exploding solar array at their wastewater treatment plant. And they had reported that prior to that, thirty-eight percent of their carbon footprint was from the, the electricity at their solar, at their non-solar wastewater plant. And it was a PTA project with the firm CL erre, I believe it's I E L E R R E. And there was a really cool video, there was like a forty-nine minute video, which at some point I would like the council to hear or to see. Because I was hoping that at some point that might be of interest when we look to putting more solar at our, at our flood treatment plant. They had reports on legislation and so forth. But the really controversial item was the PG&E, that's a kind of rebate or an allocation of funds for their non, non-fossil fuel electric generation. And most of that, of course, is for their nuclear power plant that's not in operation. And so they were offering to Sonoma Clean Power, which is a CCA, a community choice aggregate, to get a, something like three million dollar rebate of money from PG&E's nuclear power. But essentially, both the public, a lot of people in the public were just outraged that Sonoma Clean Power would have anything to do with, and getting money from it was, was not something they wanted us to do. And the board members basically unanimously agreed that rather than, it was not going to affect whether there would be more or any difference in the nuclear power generation from PG&E, because that's actually locked in that Senninopra is going to operate for four more years with one of the two units and for five more years with the other one. And they're required to generate a very specific amount of electricity for PG&E because that's what the plant does. They can't either increase or decrease it. So it actually would have no effect on the use of nuclear power, but it would not give Sonoma Clean Power this three million dollars to, which they would have to show that they were in fact using, well, not that they were using nuclear power, but that they would, it would be part of the power mix. And Sonoma Clean Power said, no, thank you, we won't do it. So that was, that was the most interesting item. And there were some other things, but I think those were the things that were of potential interest. Oh, yeah, here's one other thing. That they, they noted that since the COVID-19 epidemic and shelter in place, the commercial sector of Sonoma Clean Power's service area is down by seventeen percent. So there's less electricity uses in the commercial sector. And the residential sector is up about three percent. So that, that was a very interesting just to reflect how, how this shelter in place has affected commercial versus residential power usage. And I think that's all I've got on my mission.
All right, Larry, do you have anything?
Yes. MCov met on the fourth, and it was by phone, like a lot of things are. Anyhow, it was a review of both MCov from the state and from MTA. And they were both approved. And they're doing the best that they can do with, under the circumstances. Thank you very much.
All right. I have LACCO and we discussed the Mendocino city, I guess it's the Mendocino City Community Services District. And they're, let me think of this. And then we also discussed the, our budget for LACCO. We had a kind of a healthy discussion and that LACCO is recommending, basically, LACCO charges all the different agencies, basically, we'll call it a tax or a fee, with the privilege of having LACCO right heard over you. And I met up. And I met up with, uh, to pay to LACCO, and I think the concern was that we needed to kind of hold costs, and that was kind of a discussion that happened there. We are agreeing to meet remotely, not go to any trainings, kind of limit things, and that's going to come back for a vote at the next LACCO meeting, June, it's June 1st. So that was basically the crux of it. There was a lot of discussion over the budget. So I think it's just, we do, it's one of those things that cities and the county entities and different departments, whether it be the cemetery districts, get notified of the increase that's coming, and it's one of those things that costs do go up, and so it's going to go up, but we tried not to have it go up as high as I think it could have. And then, May 27th, Larry, is the next Measure B committee meeting. And then the other thing, again, Liga City, they've been pushing a lot of stuff out. For those of you that get email, we're getting a lot out there, and there are rounds, she's been putting a lot of stuff out there. I mean, sometimes my email will beep in close to midnight, and she's pushed out information. So it's almost a lot to digest, and so I find myself reading or going on whatever I think is appropriate for me to go on. So, and that's all I have. So, and unless anybody else has anything else, I guess, unless there's any council member reports or recommendations? Anything good and well-being?
I have a recommendation, Greta.
Go ahead.
I was wondering if at the next council meeting, we could get some kind of an update on what's happening with the conservation agreement contract that we approved 20 times ago?
Yes, actually, I could actually speak to that now if you'd like.
Well, it's not really an agenda item, so I don't know. Is that okay?
Certainly, I can speak to that in two weeks, absolutely, at the next council meeting, because I did actually just get an update today.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything else?
Yes, this is Suprema. I had said in my remarks at the last meeting that I had requested that the city manager's performance evaluation was put on for closed session. We've not discussed that in many a week, and due to the Brown Act, we've not been able to, I've not been able to reach out to our mayor to get further information. We did get direction, and I don't feel as if the direction is being followed, so I would ask that please, once again, and I would ask that another council member offer requests, because it seems as though it needs a second formal notation, so that we can get this item on agenda, so we can have the, we can move forward with it.
And again, without going into it, I believe you should have asked them, our HR director, as far as an update?
Right, that wasn't sufficient. I'm asking that the item be placed on the agenda.
I think we have a process, and I think it's going to be at one point, and I'm hoping that Karen could give us an update at one point in the course.
So we do have a process, so I'm asking if there's any other members of the council that would also like to see this item on the agenda, so that we can move forward with discussion.
I don't understand what you're asking, Suprema. Could you clarify? I mean, we do have this process that is happening now. Is there something else that you wanted to discuss on the agenda? I'm just not clear, I'm sorry.
Well, there's no, there's no way of communicating within the council, because of the Brown Act, we can't have conversations. And so I'm asking that the item be placed on the agenda, so that we can receive a proper update on the, where we're at in the process.
Hi, this is Karen. I'll be happy to answer any of the questions that you have, if you'd like to call me directly. I don't feel comfortable talking about it in open session, but I'd be glad to talk with you and explain where we are and answer any questions that you have.
This is Madge. I think what Suprema would like, and I would agree, is that rather than each of us as individuals having a conversation with you, Karen, that we should have another closed session, just to update us on where it stands and if there's any direction.
Well, and we will.
Thank you, Madge.
Yeah, and I understood what you wanted, and we do have the ability to do that. I think at the moment, it's premature, because Stephanie's had an absence and haven't really, because of the person conducting the review, hasn't really had an opportunity to do much due to her own schedule.
Karen, if it did not be timely two weeks from now at our next meeting, would we, could we get a status report of that, or not?
I can certainly put something out there.
We have two council members that have now asked for it to be on the agenda. I'm asking that we follow that protocol.
You know what, at this point, let's put it on for closed session in two weeks, and then Karen can give us an update on where we are on the agreed-upon process.
Okay.
So if Kathy, you could put that on the agenda in two weeks.
Will do.
All right. All right, at this point, we have no closed session, and unless there's any other, any good welfare, I think we're done, if I can have a motion to adjourn.
Add the motion, Larry.
Good night, everybody.